It's 7:33, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Roll call, William Johnston here. Thomas Grafenino.
Here.
Colligan.
Here.
Phil Diorio is here. Lisa Kreckler is excused. And we have Stephen Kyler via Zoom. First order of business is to review and approve the December 14th, 2022 minutes. Can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. We have two applications to discuss here tonight. The first is 78 North Cartwright Road. I said that I was going to talk to the building department about the required minimum distance between a pool and a structure. And it turns out there is no minimum distance required between a pool and a structure. It's a sort of a marvel to me that that's a thing, but.
Thanks for checking.
And so the question becomes is, you know, in general, if someone has a building in the setback and they want to tear it down and build the same building, we generally allow that. It becomes a little bit more of a sticky wicket when they want to build a different building.
And bigger.
That's right. It's changing the use to some degree and building it up higher when it's in the setback and close to the property line. The, we've heard no negative correspondence on this application. And so, you know, I'm uncertain as to, number one, why they didn't come with something that was a little bit more conforming. But second, why we need to, you know, or if we need to ask them to put it into a more conforming position. And I'd like to just open up the floor here and just ask for some input from you guys because, you know, I'm open to suggestion on this.
We were at a little bit of a standstill, weren't we? But now that you've learned that there is no ruling on the distance between a structure and a pool, you could have them move the building closer to the pool. I know they didn't want that because they had the deck in front.
That would hamper their view as well.
With that?
That would hamper their view.
But it's only the view of their backyard.
Yeah.
It's not like blocking some other neighbor's view.
And I just feel like that's not a privilege that we grant to other applicants.
Right.
To be able to keep their view and still be not conforming.
Right.
See, for me, if in fact they were building the same building.
Right.
Then, you know, I would be much more amenable to saying, go right ahead.
Right, but where it's going to be coming in the sleeping quarters, not just a like.
It's going to be taller.
Yeah, and also taller, two stories.
So, you know, I think that they're looking for, I have to look at that denial letter here. You know, according to Stephen, we can give them a.
To keep the correspondence.
Yeah, I just wanted to pull out that.
Yeah.
We can, if we choose to, give them a.
You could grant amended relief.
Yes.
Tom, do you have the denial letter?
Let me just see.
And will be.
I have, I'm sure I did.
I'm sure I got it, you just have to look.
It is.
I got everything but this.
Yeah, I want to.
Stamped.
Vision number two, if you're looking for.
This is you.
No. Vision number two, if you're looking for.
The denial letter? Yeah, there it is. Thank you, Tom. Yes. So they're requesting a variance of 14.8 feet. You know, we could give them 10 feet, we could give them 9.8 feet. So that it's still, you know, moving in, it'd still be in the setback to some degree. So that it's not pushed up very close to the pool. And yet it does get off the property line a little bit further and makes it more conforming. You know, is that something that makes sense to everyone?
Yeah, because even though there's no opposition now, we can't know what house we'll face at.
Right, no, that's correct.
Yeah.
So does, let me ask you, would ask, moving it in five feet, I personally, I find it hard to see it as a hardship for them. And I do think it's a gain for the neighboring property.
Given the height.
Yeah, that's, you know.
That's reasonable.
You know, the pyramid.
Right. And, you know, we don't have a pyramid law in this town.
No, we don't.
But I do think that, you know, that as you get taller, close to the property line, it has a greater effect. You know, they had written in a letter to us talking about some other accessory buildings that were, appeared to them to be closer than 15 feet to the property line or around 15 feet on some, not, some neighboring neighborhood properties. Most of those were garages and not accessory dwellings. So if it's okay with all of you, I would suggest that we grant an alternate relief. It's asking them to move it five feet. So that in the end, it's about, you know, about 20 feet off the side yard line. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
So I don't know how we do that. Stephen?
With the questionnaire.
With our questionnaire on the variance checklist.
You would do it based on the amended relief that you grant.
Okay, so what we then would like to give Christina is 9.8 feet instead of 14.8 feet. So are we ready to go to the?
Which way you mean, what were you saying?
So they were asking for 14.8 feet.
Right.
A variance of 14, oh, sorry.
Yeah, you're going the wrong way.
Sorry, 19.8.
Yes, that sounds better.
That's correct. Sorry, Punch.
No, I thought that sounded a little.
Okay.
But in that, I was just thinking about it. I think if you do it this way, the cleanest way would be to do both. So when you go through the standards, what they were asking and what you're granting and just talk about how what you're granting is, you know, in line with, you know, approval, vis a vis the standards.
So here's the thing. Punch, they want a variance of 14.8 feet.
I know they do.
And what I'm saying is we're only going to give them a variance of 9.8 feet. So that.
The distance will be.
That's right. So it's not the distance from the.
Property line.
Yeah, it's 9.8 feet.
Of relief.
Of relief. Instead of 14.8 feet of relief.
Okay.
So that instead of being 15.2 feet from the property line, they'll be 20.2.
That sounds better. When you finish the sentence, you only went halfway.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so are we ready to go here?
Yeah, I'm writing it down, right?
Yes, Lynn, you are the keeper of the chronicles. Whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. I'm going to say no because we are moving this in so that it'll be five feet further in than the existing building there. I also think that, you know, the character of the neighborhood will be unchanged.
The new structure will be more conforming than the existing structure.
Yes.
Right.
Whether the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance. You know, they could put it in the front yard, but I don't know if it's a real feasible alternative, there's space there, but it makes no sense. So shall we say no to that? Because it, you know, something, if you put it somewhere else on the property, it just won't, just won't make sense. Whether the requested variance is substantial. I mean, what they requested is substantial, what we are giving is still somewhat substantial. I would say yes.
Yes.
And then is that a nine?
So we're going to give them a 9.8 feet of relief.
Okay.
Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? I don't see it. You know, they're going to have to have an updated septic system.
Right.
Going to have to be dark skies compliant.
Right.
Would the alleged difficulty was self-created? Yes, I mean, they want to build this. All right, so are we good to go on this?
Mr. Chairman, we just want to be able to articulate in the decision why the decrease in the relief that you grant then would not, you know, be a detriment to the surrounding community. Like, you got to distinguish between what they were asking for and what you're granting and how what you're granting is, again, better for the community.
Okay.
It's less substantial.
And so the variance would be less substantial, they'll be further away from the property line.
That's the biggest piece of the property.
Yes.
Right.
Seeing that they're putting on a second story is a factor too.
Yeah. Does that?
No, 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 I like, I'm just going to need that incorporated to this thing.
Okay. All right, so that's that. Oh, we have to have. We're all good, right?
Yeah, what are we calling the second structure? It's just an increase in the height, right? Structure?
Yes.
There's no mass or anything, okay.
All right. We're going to move on? Yeah, I'm sorry, Tom, I stole your. What am I doing? Let me just. All right. All right. Second is 85 Shore Road. So we had requested updated plans showing the height of the portico, which we saw it's 18 feet on the revised plan. And, but I am a little concerned with the whether the pool was going to, or the pool patio is going to be in the setback. It appears to me that the retaining wall and all the sort of accoutrements are still there. And there's just this little patch of what is labeled as replaced with natural landscape per town request. It's hard to know, is that like?
Some seagrass or?
Ma'am? This is a work session, it's not a hearing. And, you know, I personally would like to see an actual plan. Plantings that are going to shield the neighbors and also some, I still see the whole retaining wall and everything seems to be staying the same here as it was before.
That hasn't changed.
So, you know, it appears to me that basically just cut off a little bit of hardscape there and put in a couple of plants and call it a day. But it doesn't really look like that's kind of what we were looking for, I don't think. So Stephen, let me ask you, can we kick this back again and ask for some sort of a different plan on this?
Is it still open for written comment?
Well, it was open until January 11th.
No, so then no, you'd have to reopen the hearing.
Okay. Ma'am?
It's not a variance. We withdrew it.
Okay, ma'am, please come on up and let it address us.
I apologize, Paige Murphy, Burke and Sullivan for the applicant, Michael Eagle. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that applicants couldn't speak in a work session, but we withdrew that variance. So it will comply with whatever the building inspector wanted. And he specifically referred to the patio. So we took that, that section out. And I withdrew it on the record. So there should be no discussion of that area because I withdrew it. There's only one variance now.
And so let me ask you, ma'am, what is the purpose then of the retaining wall there?
Well, that is.
Mr. Chair, at this point, we really would have to reopen.
Okay, thank you. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, because let's face that, two years from now, they could take the plants out and put concrete there again.
Yeah.
If the walls move back where it's supposed to be, there's no question.
Can I ask a question?
Really, it's.
It's only because I heard you referring to the retaining walls, so I thought if there was.
No, yeah, look, we can't, we can't accept testimony here at this.
No, no, no.
No, no, so that's.
Okay, I was just going to ask you.
No, 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 if you were going to ask and we said no, then don't ask what you were going to ask.
Okay.
All right. That's. I mean, I'm uncomfortable with this.
I am too.
I feel like it's, you know, it somehow doesn't seem like our concerns have been addressed here. What do you think about that, Lynn?
I don't have a great feeling about it, but I don't know if I fully understand the withdrawal of the variance either.
Well, the, I don't know, that's, the application is the application.
Yeah.
That it's, you know, for me, I'd be happy to reopen the hearing, not for tonight.
Yeah.
But for our, we'd have to re-notice it, so it would have to be in February. Ma'am?
Just keep it, why don't you rule on it then? Rule on it. You officially withdrew it, though, you said?
No, it's.
Well, you're saying I can't withdraw it, so then rule on it.
Look, if.
If it's been withdrawn, we shouldn't even be speaking about anything because they're not.
You know, that's why I feel confused. So then why, you know, why did we open it?
There was, it's my understanding there were two variance requests, correct?
Correct.
They're very specific.
And as far as I can tell, Stephen, I haven't seen a written request to remove that variance request.
You have a transcript.
No.
But the most recent site, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, it's the most recent site plan that was submitted. Does it relocate a structure to make it compliant? So when you look at that site plan, does it still show the need for two variances?
So Stephen, there's a large, it appears to be a large retaining wall wrapped around that area. And it looks to me like, you know, while the hardscape may have been removed, that the surrounding wall that, you know, was keeping this all together is still in the same exact spot as it was before. And so, you know, I am a little, you know, confused by this.
And what was the second variance request they asked?
It's for the portico in the front of the house.
Okay, and is that still showing an encroachment into a setback?
Yes.
Yes.
But it was minimal, right?
Yeah, it's five.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so they were asking for that and then the pool, but you're saying the pool is still in the setback, the pool and the accoutrements are still in the setback.
Well, you know, I I am uncertain, Stephen, as to, you know, the, they show the hardscape removed, they show a couple of green, a bunch of green dots there saying, natural landscape as per town request. You know, for me, if I, you know, it's the retaining wall that I don't understand there, Stephen.
Okay, what I would do is if you have questions on that, you can deny, because she's saying she withdrew the variance request anyway, so you deny that relief. And then if you're going to, then go to the other requested relief, which is in connection with the portico and then decide on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so let's move on to the portico.
We're not going to act on the.
We're going to deny the relief on that.
Okay.
Okay? And then, you know, then the building department can sort that part. What's, what?
Well, if it's been withdrawn, we don't have to deny it, right?
No, it has, it hasn't.
The wall is still in the setback.
Okay. Right.
That's the problem.
Right.
Right, Phil?
That's, to me, it's the problem.
Yeah, because she verbally put it on the record that she would withdraw that various request. However, they submitted a site plan that shows that it still might be in that area. So formally deny that. So you're just rubber stamping their request and making it clear to the building department that no structures can be within that setback. And then you go on to the other one.
Okay, perfect. How's everybody feel about the portico? I'm.
I'm fine with the portico.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so so are we going to do two separate checklists for this, Stephen? Just to separate these two?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I only have one.
Okay, well, whatever.
I only got one, too.
We'll respond to this one for the portico, yeah, that's all.
If you'll save me one for the official first, even.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll do the pool first, the pool, the initial variance for the pool.
Right.
Whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. I'd say yes, because the Derby property would be definitely affected. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance. And I'm going to say yes, they could just shrink the patio down. The, whether the requested variance is substantial. You know, it really is not that large a variance, so I would say no, but it's, it's still something that's very close to the neighbors. And something that generally generates noise is a pool.
Right.
Would the variance have an adverse effect, an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? You know, for me, it's just the noise factor for the neighbors.
But the pool would be there anyway.
Right, but it's like if the patio is here and you're having people.
Right, okay, okay, I get that, yeah.
Would the alleged difficulty was self-created? I'm going to say yes, they just wanted to build this. All right? So, and we are going to deny this for the pool. All right, then we're going to move on to the portico.
Can I get a new blank piece to write this down?
I'll just. Give me one second, I've got one right here, Lynn.
Okay.
All right. Whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Now we're referring to the portico, the five-foot leave for question. I'm waiting for a little input.
Sorry, I'm just reading.
We had granted this for safety reasons to come out of a house.
Yes.
Have a platform, they can.
And steps.
Walk the doorstep and shut the door, then walk down the steps.
That's right.
And we've had grant that.
Yes. So would there be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No, it's a portico and a residential.
Right.
Property.
Okay, would the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance? I guess they could, you know, shrink the whole house down the way the one neighbor would have, you know, had requested. But I don't know how feasible that is.
What do you want me to say?
I mean, yes, I don't know. What do you think, yes or no, folks?
I would say yes.
Yes.
Feasible.
They could move the house.
Right, although they're going to get closer to the wetlands.
Right.
Or shrink it.
Or shrink the house.
Right, so yes, that could, in fact, yes. Whether the requested variance is substantial, I'm going to say this is pretty small.
Yeah, I'd say.
Small.
What is it? How many feet?
They're requesting five feet. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
No, because of the small size, I would say.
Right, it's very small. Would the alleged difficulty was self-created? I'm going to say yes, this is just part of the panel, plan that they.
Yep.
And Christina, we are on the road then to approve the request for the variance for the portico.
No conditions on this?
Well, the, yeah.
The portico one?
On the portico, no. You know, and then Stephen, I would like to just make sure that we have some sort of discussion with the building department about this, the retaining wall and what's, you know, what the building code calls for and that kind of thing. And, you know, what, just going forward, that they'll know that we denied the relief that was requested and the applicant, you know, has stated here that they, or the representative of the applicant said that they were going to withdraw that request. And, you know, that's just, there's nothing else really for us to say on this, is that correct, Stephen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'll speak to the building department.
Stephen, I just want to clarify, what, are we stamping the plans? At this point, I guess we're not, right?
Tonight?
No, 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 but the specific plans.
Yeah, well, according to Stephen, if it doesn't show any hardscape in here, now the building department can look at it and if they say that there's a problem, then they'll have to, they'll send them back here for another variance if they don't want to amend the plan to, but if they say it's all good, then it's all good. I mean, that's, it's not our call.
So this site plan is therefore sufficient for approval?
As long as the building department.
It's the building department. If they have an issue with it, then there's going to be another denial letter and they're going to be sent back or they would have to amend the plans.
But if the building department says it's okay, then it's okay. I mean, that's, you know, that's not our bailiwick. But if the building department says it's okay, then it's okay. I mean, that's, that's, you know, that's not our, our bailiwick. All right. I don't think we have any other business here tonight, do we? Anybody? No?
No conditions?
Oh, what's that?
Conditions.
Oh, it's, I, I, I don't see, for, for the portico, there's no conditions.
Not, they never can close it in or anything like that? Put sides up? I think we should put that in there.
Okay, so that it's, that it, that it won't be enclosed in the future.
It just stays open?
Yeah. All right.
I think that's.
Yeah, I think that's good, Punch. Stephen, do you feel like we're missing anything here?
No, you're good.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to close the meeting at 8:04. All in favor?
Aye.